Thank you. Good evening. My name is Beth Margeson, and on behalf of the Citizens for Voter Education, welcome to this evening's Candidates Forum. The Citizens for Voter Education have been conducting election forums for nearly 40 years under the auspices of Portsmouth Public Library. The group's mission is to provide opportunities for the candidates to present themselves to the public and for the public to ask questions of the candidates. It does not support or endorse candidates. Tonight, we'll hear from most of the candidates for City Council. Assistant Mayor Joanna Kelly could not be here tonight as she is in Washington, D.C. I will be reading a statement on her behalf shortly. Now, some election information. The election will be held on Tuesday, November 4th. The polls will be open from 8:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. Polling locations are Ward 1, New Franklin School; Ward 2, Portsmouth Middle School; Ward 3, Portsmouth Senior Activity Center; Ward 4, Dondero Elementary School; and Ward 5, Little Harbor School. If you are unsure where to vote, please check with the City Clerk section of the city website, call 603-610-7245, or email thecityclerk@porsmithnh.gov. The following information about voting is found on the City Clerk section of the website. Please consult it for the most up-to-date, complete information about voting, as some requirements have changed in the last year. Here are some highlights. Registering to Vote. If you are not registered to vote, the last day for registering was today. However, you may still register at the polls on Election Day. To register, you must show proof of citizenship, such as a birth certificate, passport, naturalization papers, a citizenship affidavit, or any other document deemed reasonable by the registrars. You must show proof that you are 18 or older, and proof of residence, such as a utility bill, rental agreement, or mortgage statement. These documents must show your street address. No post office boxes or business addresses are acceptable. To actually vote on Election Day, the voter ID law requires that you show a photo ID in order to vote. You may use a valid driver's license, DMV ID card, U.S. Armed Services ID, U.S. Passport, valid New Hampshire Student ID, or any ID that contains a picture of yourself. For voting purposes, a picture ID that expired no more than five years ago is sufficient to vote. If you don't have a photo ID, you can have your identity verified by an election official, or you will be allowed to retrieve a photo ID to vote. Voting by Absentee Ballot. This is long. Absentee ballots, again, please look at the city website, but absentee ballots are now available if you will be absent from the city on Election Day. There are changes to the absentee ballot process. Any individual registering to vote by absentee for a qualified reason must provide proof of their U.S. Citizenship and age, in addition to domicile and identity with their registration. Registered voters who request an absentee ballot must show proof of their identity to receive their absentee ballot. If sending their absentee ballot request by mail, the voter must include a copy of their photo identification or a notarized signature on their absentee ballot application form. If the voter is obtaining their absentee ballot in person, they must show their city or town clerk, photo identification, digital proof is also accepted, or a notarized signature on their absentee ballot application form. The deadlines to request absentee ballots remain the same. Voters must request their absentee ballots by 5:00 p.m. in person the day before an election, or by 12:00 p.m. the day before the election by mail or email. Sample ballots for all the wards have been posted on the City Clerk's website. There are three ballot questions for this year's election. The first is whether to allow the operation of social districts in the city of Portsmouth. The second is whether to prohibit the operation of keynote games within the city of Portsmouth. And the third is whether to prohibit the operation of games of chance within the city of Portsmouth. Please see your sample ballot for the full text. Members of the audience here tonight are invited to submit written questions for the candidates. There are pencils and no cards on the chairs for this purpose. Just raise your hand, your question will be picked up. If we receive multiple questions on the same topic, they may be combined. This program is being broadcast on Channel 22. Now, let us hear from the candidates themselves. Each candidate has prepared a two-minute opening statement in which they have been asked to answer the question, "What are the two most critical challenges facing our city?" I have a statement from Assistant Mayor Joe Kelly. I will read that after the other candidates have spoken. First, I will invite Counselor Andrew Bagley to the podium to read his statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Good evening, everyone. I'm Andrew Bagley, and I'm honored to be running for my third term on the City Council. For many years, my work took me around the world. When COVID shut down my travel, I turned my focus homeward to our schools, our economy, and how our city would recover. That's what led me to run for council initially, and over the past two terms, I've worked hard to listen, collaborate, and make balanced, forward-looking decisions. Watching my daughter grow up here, attending Portsmouth Public Schools, and being enriched by our community to now being a freshman at Plymouth State University has strengthened my commitment to keeping Portsmouth a great place to live, learn, and raise a family. My full-time job is working with companies that manufacture products like jet engines and medical devices, where precision and accountability are required every day. That job has taught me to be people-focused and responsive. I also serve as the Chair of the Nominating Committee for the Portsmouth Athanam, the Vice Chair of the Seacoast Y Advisory Board, Chair of Parking Traffic and Safety Committee, and Council Liaison to the Chamber Collaborative. Taxes are always a concern of mine. My property taxes went up 25% this last revaluation, largely driven by state policy, which the City Council doesn't control. Nevertheless, I've worked to remove millions from our CIP, and I voted against several budgets because I thought they went too far. At the same time, I will always stand behind the importance of maintaining our excellent schools, though the cornerstone of what makes Portsmouth such a special place to live. I'm running for a third term to continue the important work we started, advancing housing issues like with ADUs, supporting education, and building a vibrant, sustainable community for the next generation. We all need to work together, regardless of our differences, and Portsmouth is a place we can do that. My name is Andrew Bagley, and I'm asking for your vote this November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Rick Beckstead.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Citizens for Voters Education for this opportunity to speak. I'd like to thank the public for being here tonight, and for the audience that's at home. My name is Rick Beckstead. I'm no stranger to the city of Portsmouth. I have been an advocate, both in office for two terms and an at-large advocate, as we used to call them, three-minute counselors when you would speak from this podium at a City Council meeting. And I have diligently, over those 12 years, tried to do my best to be able to represent the city itself as a whole. The two most critical things that I feel, and not just my feelings, but the people that I've been speaking to over the last several weeks, is affordability and true representation. People out there are feeling the pinch, the affordability of what we're endured here in the city, my family, as well as everyone around. Thirty million dollars roughly has been spent over the last four years. The last three budget cycles of the council never has been challenged once at the City Council level to challenge the city manager itself and the spending of the process. Representation just seems to be a simple thing of creating zoning, zoning that may or may not change. What people don't know, in most cases, is that there are about 2,000 units that are going to be coming onboard over the next three years. That's at least, in my figures, 3,500 people. That's at least 3,500 cars. I don't care if people say that cars are not an issue. They are. And think of it right now, with those issues in place, they're not here? Think of the congestion and the things that are complaining now. I truly want to be able to be back to where I can make a difference. The voters had gone and put me there in that place again. I'm asking for the voters to put me there because we need true leadership, we need true representation for the city of Portsmouth. Thank you very much.
Next, we will hear from Counselor Rich Blaylock.
Thank you, and thank you all for attending this evening. Thank you for watching at home. My name is Rich Blaylock. I'm seeking reelection on the City Council, seeking for my third term. You might know me from the old Fairlanding Restaurant. You might know me from coaching your kids at Little League Field. You might know me from coaching your kids on the football field, but I'm accessible. I answer all my emails. I'm proud of the work we've done over the last four years. We've accomplished a lot. We've got a skateboard park. We've got a bike pump track on a rail trail next to the skateboard park. We've got two turf fields over the community campus for the kids to play on outside. We kept the turf at the high school. We instituted Student Government Day, helped teach the kids municipal government, hopefully plant some seeds, maybe they'll run for office someday. We've also moved the housing forward at Sherburne School. We've helped that neighborhood ease their fears, feel more comfortable having some more neighbors. We've also increased the number of pickleball courts. I know a lot of people will enjoy that. And, you know, the last four years, I've done a lot of work. I don't just sit up here on Monday nights. I also serve on the Recreation Board. I serve on the Historic District Commission. I serve on the Safe Water Advisory Group. I served on the Skate Park Site Selection Committee. I served on the Skateboard Park Committee. I served on the Land Use Committee. I served on the Citywide Neighborhood Committee. I was the Chair of the Sister City Committee, and I also served on the CIP Subcommittee. So I've been pretty busy over the last four years, but I'm here because I still have the energy and time, and I'm still willing to serve you. I have two ears and one mouth. I'm a public servant at heart, and I hope on November 4th, you remember Rich Blaylock. My grandfather and my father both served this city before me. I bring that institutional knowledge. I know how we got here. I know how Portsmouth became so special. Let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Counselor Kate Cook.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight, and thank you to the Citizens for Voter Education for hosting us this evening. I'm Kate Cook, and I'm a two-term City Councilor. I'm running for my third term on the City Council. I love government. I'm fascinated by government and how it works, and making it right, making sure we get it right for the residents of Portsmouth, for our residents anywhere. And part of that, and part of the work I've been doing on the City Council, is trying to improve the way the city interacts with residents. And so, I chair the Governance Committee on the City Council. I also co-chair the Municipal Buildings Committee. I helped found the Public Art Review Committee and the Arts and Cultural Commission, and I serve on both of those as well. I serve on the Legislative Subcommittee, which means I go to Concord periodically and testify and try to lobby for things that we need here in Portsmouth. I care immensely about this community, and we were asked tonight to answer, "What are the critical issues facing us?" The first one we should be talking about, and we need to be talking about, is affordable housing. And that's affordability across the board. That's from young people that are struggling to get into the community, our workforce that is rapidly leaving and moving to places like Rochester, and then struggling to commute. It's also our elderly residents who are struggling with their tax burden, and so they feel like they have to sell their homes. So, we need to tackle the affordability crisis in housing, and that our approach has to be multifaceted. It's not just one thing that is going to solve this crisis. It's not just building housing, but it's also finding ways to address affordability for our current residents. And so, I'm very focused on affordability is the second thing that we have to look at very critically. That means keeping the tax burden in check. That's why I voted against the budget this year, because I believe that we have to keep the budget below the Social Security Cost of Living Index every single year, because that makes it affordable for our elderly residents who are living on fixed income. So, please, when you go out to vote, consider voting for me. I would really appreciate your support.
Next, we will hear from Michelle Flynn.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming, and thank you to the Citizens for Voter Education for coordinating this event. My name is Michelle Flynn, and I'm proud to be a fourth-generation Portsmouth resident. This city has been my home nearly my entire life. My husband and I bought our house here. We raised our two children and watched them grow through the Seacoast Community School and Portsmouth Public Schools. We weren't just raised in Portsmouth. Portsmouth raised us. It shaped our values and our sense of belonging. I love this city, its charm, its resilience, and even its quirks. Portsmouth continues to evolve, sometimes faster than I can keep up. But I want to ensure it remains a place where my children, the fifth generation, can live, thrive, and raise their own families if they so choose. So when I think about the two most critical challenges facing our city, I believe they are housing affordability and fiscal sustainability. First, housing. We need to build and maintain diverse mixed-income housing so that everyone, teachers, artists, service workers, young families, retirees, have a place here. Portsmouth should be a city where people can put down roots, not just pass through. Second, fiscal sustainability. We must ensure that every dollar in our city budget is spent wisely. That means trimming where we can and investing strategically, especially in infrastructure and in services that support long-term resilience. I'm running because I believe in thoughtful, inclusive progress. I've served Portsmouth in many ways, on the Board of Seacoast Community School, as a Girl Scout leader at Little Harbor, with the Equity Council for SAU 52, and I volunteer for the last eight years, I volunteered for N68 Hours of Hunger. I've spent the past several months digging into how the City Council operates, its systems, its constraints, and its opportunities. I've also been listening to residents across Portsmouth, and there's a clear thread. People love this city deeply, but many have concerns about the expense, pace, and nature of change. I hear that, and I feel that, and I want to be part of shaping thoughtful, inclusive solutions. Thank you. My name is Michelle Flynn, and I hope I have your vote on November 4th.
Next, we will hear from Annie Hopkins.
Hello, everybody, and thank you so much for your time this evening. My name is Annie Hopkins, and I am a small-business owner, physical therapist, and a mom to a young son. And through these roles in my life, I have seen firsthand the challenges that folks, you know, in young families and folks with disabilities face. You know, as a physical therapist, we work on mobility challenges every day, so I can't unsee it when I go into the public sector. I'm running for City Council because I believe in leadership that's rooted in collaboration and community. I want to be an inclusive voice for folks that can't make it to these events, can't make it because of work or childcare. So I'd like to bring as many voices to the table and help them feel seen. As many folks have said, two critical challenges, housing affordability, of course. I feel this, too. Should our family grow any bigger, I wouldn't be able to move up. There's no ladder of housing here in Portsmouth anymore. And each of these things, you know, ties into the other with maintaining livability as we grow. So, we can help by updating zoning, multi-use spaces, partnering with developers who actually will prioritize community spaces. Growth should strengthen what we love about Portsmouth, the character, safer sidewalks, crosswalks, that's important to folks with strollers and wheelchairs and walkers. And I would like to see more community gathering spaces. So as we build these new developments, how can they invite a warm space, an inviting space for communities to thrive? I live in Atlantic Heights with my husband and my young son, and one of my favorite things about that neighborhood is the community. So, if you happen to vote for me on November 4th, I can promise practical, community-rooted leadership that listens, takes action, and keeps Portsmouth a place where people can thrive. Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Petra Huda.
Good evening. My name is Petra Huda. First, I'd like to thank the host of the forum, the League for Women Voters. Portsmouth is a city worth protecting, its history, its character, and most of all, its people. I'm running for City Council to restore fiscal responsibility, protect affordability, and ensure that growth enhances rather than overwhelms our community. The first critical challenge we face is unsustainable budget growth. In just the last three years, the city's spending has increased more than $23 million, even though our population and our service area have not changed. This year's budget added another $5 million, pushing us up to $150 million, with no serious review of efficiencies or cost controls. Those increases drive up property taxes for homeowners and rents for tenants, making it harder for families, seniors, and workers to stay here. During my prior term on the council, I fought for and achieved the lowest budget increases in a decade, because I believe responsible spending is the foundation of true affordability. Oversight, not micromanagement, is what's missing, and I'll bring that back. The second major challenge is preserving Portsmouth's historic character while managing growth. Our historic character is more than just nostalgia. It's an economic asset. Growth should fit our city, not overwhelm it. Our downtown and our neighborhoods are the soul of our city. They are also key to our economic vitality. Growth is important, but it must be smart growth that respects our history and our scale. Too often, we have seen projects that overpower rather than complement our community. We can learn from cities that have protected their character while still thriving economically, such as Charleston, Santa Fe. With thoughtful oversight and balanced planning, we can keep Portsmouth affordable, livable, and uniquely ours. I ask for your vote to achieve these goals. Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Jim Lee.
Good evening. My name is Jim Lee, and I've lived in Portsmouth for 15 years. You may notice I don't talk like some of you because I grew up in East Tennessee, but I have lived here for 15 years with my wife, Anne. We have a real estate business we operate. During that time, I served on the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee to reopen Portsmouth after COVID, and I also served six years on the Zoning Board of Adjustment. So, I think those skills, combined with my real estate skills, that we advocate for our clients every day, would serve the City Council well. We, you know, one big thing we're facing is affordable housing, and that real estate is by forte and has been for the last 40 years. So, I think at the state level, the New Hampshire Association of Realtors, in conjunction with some other outfits, got the accessory dwelling unit law passed for New Hampshire, and now you can build an accessory dwelling unit adjacent to your house and rent it out for extra income or have a relative or whatever that lives there that needs to have a place to stay. So, we advocate for our clients every day, and I would bring that same advocacy to the citizens of Portsmouth. I would ask for your vote on November the 4th, and thank you for coming tonight.
Next, we will hear from Mayor Degle McCaughran.
Thank you, Beth, and the voters of Citizens Education. It's an honor to be here with you tonight. I just want to thank all the candidates and all the candidates' family. I know that you put a lot of work in, and it's a family affair for all of you. And I want to thank all of the folks that came out here this evening. Being a citizen is tough work, but Portsmouth's always up to the task, and you guys certainly live up to the title of citizen. When I thought about what are the two things that we face that are the toughest, it comes down to how can we be a place that keeps our kids here, and how can we be a place that keeps those that built Portsmouth here? You know, I got a nine-year-old and an almost-five-year-old, and I think about that every day. You know, to keep those kids, we need a strong education system. I was happy to support the budget. It supported the teacher's contract here this year. I was happy that we adopted our climate action plan, because, you know, I want our children to have a place that's not flooding. But we also have to talk about affordable housing. You know, our goal right now, as parents, is to get our kids out of our bed, but at some point, you know, we want them to also be able to come back and choose to live here and have a home of their own. That takes a lot of work, and that takes all of us coming together as a community to do so. The second, I think of, you know, folks like my mom. My mom, you know, raised me here, a big part of the community, was on the school board, was a huge mentor in my life. And when my father passed, if they hadn't built the ADU, she would not be able to afford the taxes on her home. So I'm proud that we have the highest senior and disabled tax exemption in the state. I know that we have to continue to offer solutions when it comes to the budget and create more efficient government. At the end of the day, when I look at how we're going to solve that, there's nine people that are going to be up here, but it's all of us in this room collectively together that, living up to the word of citizen, are going to solve that. That's what Portsmouth does. We show up, and I think that we're going to do it together. Thank you. My name is Degle McCaughran, November 4th.
Next, we will hear from Counselor Beth Moreau.
Good evening. Thank you all for joining us here this evening. I have come to believe that there is one critical challenge for our city that is far greater than any other, making the city affordable for residents of all economic means across all their various stages of life. In my two terms as counselor, I've focused most of my energy on this challenge and will continue to do so in my next term. With federal funds drying up, this means continuing to review budgets line by line to ensure the city delivers great services, particularly first responders and schools, at the minimum cost. This means maximizing parking revenue while not impacting residents visiting downtown businesses. This means continuing to ensure that longtime homeowners who find them This means continuing to ensure that longtime homeowners who find themselves land-rich but cash-poor can afford their taxes and utilities and remain in the city. This means initiatives I champion, like the Gateway Neighborhood Overlay District, which encourages converting office buildings, paying low property taxes into higher-value residential uses. This means being flexible and creative in encouraging the development of workforce housing throughout the city, employing different tools in different neighborhoods, and maximizing public-private housing initiatives. This means improving public transit options, such as looking at the use of microtransit loops to reduce traffic and the need for residential parking. This means encouraging everyone across the city to step up and welcome new neighbors who want to live and work here and contribute to our vibrant, culturally diverse community. Please vote to continue moving Portsmouth forward. I hope to see you vote for me on November 4th. Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Tom Rossi.
My name is Tom Rossi, running for city council. Thank you all for coming here today. Beth, thank you for organizing this. I think we've all hit on the same top two issues: affordability of housing and also the runaway increases in property taxes that are making it very difficult for people to stay here. I want to tell you a story about a woman I met today during canvassing, because those are the challenges, but let's personalize them. She has been living in Portsmouth all her life. She raised her children here, and she is, she told me with tears in her eyes, literally, that she is fearful that she will not be able to stay in her home through her retirement because of the increased expense of property taxes. And she's very, she has a lot of regret that her children, adults now, who would like to move back and be closer to her and be part of the community they grew up in, it's just not doable. So that's the personal side of the issues that we've all hit on. I'm very gratified to hear that the other candidates are all thinking about the same issues. I'm very sure that if we bring our various backgrounds and perspectives to solving those problems, we can make progress. My background is as a business executive in the pharmaceutical industry and the biotech industry. I have been a serial CEO focusing on women's health care and pediatric rare diseases. I've learned how to work with people with diverse opinions and a lot of knowledge and good intentions to get things done. I know how to do that. I will bring those perspectives and that way of operating to the city council if I'm elected. I believe I've behaved that way on the Zoning Board of Adjustment, where I've served for four years, established strong relationships with my colleagues, and have been known to be a rational and calm deliberative thinker. And also, sometimes I tell a pretty good joke. So thanks for coming here today, and I look forward to serving you as a city council member. Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Bob Sullivan.
The good news of all this is that the public spirit in this wonderful city runs so high that you have been presented with an excellent slate of candidates from which you can pick a city council. As you have already heard, and you will hear more after I'm done, these are fine people who can do a good job for you, and you have the good fortune of being able to pick what you believe are the best nine of this group of good people. Now, this means you can end up with an excellent city council. Honesty compels me to say that that's a true statement, whether you elect me or not. However, I think there's one good reason why you might want to consider voting for me, and it's this: the crowning achievement of my lifetime, the thing I am most proud of and will always be most proud of, the thing that I hope somebody carves into my gravestone, is that for 40 years, I was the city attorney of the city of Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I served in this chamber and the predecessor chamber on Chapel Street, advising city managers, city councils, department heads for all that time, and I did it because they really liked the work that the city does. Educates people's children, protects them from criminals, puts out fires in their houses, races them to the hospital in times of emergency, produces one of the wonderful public libraries in the state of New Hampshire, and on and on and on. The Public Works Department, which does every single one of you so much good every single day you were here. And in doing all that, things for those years, I learned a lot. And my goal in running for the city council is to take that learning over all those years and continue to serve the citizens of the city as a member of the council.
Next, we will hear from Councilor John Tabor.
Thank you, Beth, and Citizens for Voter Education. I'm John Tabor, a three-term city councillor, running for reelection. And prior to my council work, I was the publisher of Seco's Media Group. The city's two most pressing issues are housing costs and balancing the tax burden while maintaining our strong schools and services. Both those have the most impact on the quality of life for everyone in Portsmouth. Housing: it's not sustainable for people to commute 20, 30 miles to work here, or for a single mom and her child to face 20% rent increases. But you elected us not to be idealists. You elect us in local government to solve problems, and I believe you've seen this council be problem solvers. I co-chair the Housing Committee with Assistant Mayor Kelly. We got the largest affordable housing project in 40 years across the finish line at the Sherburne School, and we've advanced common sense zoning changes to boost supply. We haven't solved the crisis, but we've made more progress than any council in many years, I think. And personally, it's been a huge learning experience. I've had to stretch and grow and learn more than ever before, and it's been a team effort, and I want to continue that work. The tax burden: we had a revaluation that shifted the tax burden from commercial to residential. And as a result, a majority of our residents, more than half, had tax increases of 10% before the budget even started. I've introduced spending guidelines for the debate about the budget, and the final budget reduced positions to protect taxpayers. That's not easy, but it's necessary. Let me be clear: we can't cut our way to being a great city, but we also can't let the tax burden grow faster than people's incomes. I look forward to the questions tonight, and I hope to continue serving Portsmouth and solving problems. And vote for me, please, on November 4th.
Next, we will hear from Paige Trace.
Thank you to the voters for education, for hosting this event this evening, and thank you to all of you for being here. Ladies and gentlemen, we are a very popular city. That's something we've all known. Now it seems so does everyone else. We are creative, we're artistic, forward-thinking, caring, and historic. We embrace our uniqueness, our openness, and for those reasons, those of us here wish to stay here, while so many more wish to move here. We face the critical prospect of unaffordability for so many of us. Annually, our council approves the budget, and our city manager then suggests the tax rate, dependent upon budget size, to Concord. That tax rate then interfaces with the city's valuation of your home to create your tax bill. We must be sensitive to approving a sustainable budget. We must be balanced and responsible. The council needs to act efficiently to create a budget that's affordable. We need to protect our services and the educational needs of our youngest. You, in turn, are dependent upon the council to listen and work together to protect you. Your ability to stay here, you shouldn't have to worry because the council's inability to understand the difference between want and need. Housing is the other critical challenge that faces Portsmouth. We're facing imbalance build with more to come. Over 2,000 market-rate units approved, where is the affordability? The critical challenge is that the imbalance build threatens the very fabric that made Portsmouth so exciting. The approved units are currently unaffordable to most already here. While we can't change what's been approved, we can try to create the balance necessary moving forward. And I thank you. And I'm Paige Trace, and I would very much be honored for your vote. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Peter Whalen.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank Beth and the voters for sponsoring this. My name is Peter Whalen. I've been a proud resident of Portsmouth for over 34 years. My career, I came here working, I was a former corporate executive with PepsiCo-Frieda Lay, where I managed several regional operations and oversaw hundreds of employees. I've experienced leading corporate turnarounds and addressing significant organizational challenges. Currently, I operate a small business here in the fishing industry, and I serve on a lot of boards. I serve on the New England Fisheries Management Council, New Hampshire Marine Advisory Board, and American Saltwater Guides Association. I'm running for election to the council to serve you, the residents of our community, with strong leadership and proven experience. My nearly four decades of corporate leadership have involved guiding organizations through very tough times, reorganizations, and union negotiations. These experiences have taught me the importance of focus, attentive listening, and they've prepped me to help lead the city through current and future challenges. A word about the two challenges facing Portsmouth: fiscal responsibility. Portsmouth is at a crossroads. Over the past four years, the city council has increased the budget from $120 million to $150 million, a $30 million increase, while adding more than 33 new hires. This trajectory is unsustainable for us as residents. As a city councillor, managing the city budget is the most important thing that you can do. We must address this issue head-on. We are losing residents who can no longer afford to live here, including retirees, young families, and millennials. Portsmouth has a spending problem which needs to be solved with budget control and new revenue sources. A word about affordability: affordability begins with the city budget. 40% of the housing consists of rentals and apartments. Every increase in the city budget forces more people out. I look forward to answering your questions tonight, and please vote for Peter Whalen on November 4th. I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. And now I will, can I put this in? And now I will read.
I can argue with you.
Hopefully, nobody's not going to peek into questions. I'm going to read a statement from Assistant Mayor Joe Kelly. Hello, everyone. I'm sorry I can't be with you there in person. I'm in DC, working with the Small Business Alliance in hopes of adding accessibility and fairness for small businesses nationwide. I'm Joanna Kelly, and I'm asking for your vote for reelection to the Portsmouth City Council. Over the past two terms, I've had the honor of serving as your assistant mayor, and during that time, I've developed a deep appreciation for how our city operates, not just what decisions get made, but how they get made. I found real joy in learning the inner workings of city government and sharing that knowledge with our community. In fact, it inspired me to go back to school to study public administration with the hope of continuing on to law school. Through all that learning and listening, two issues rise to the top for the most pressing for Portsmouth: housing affordability and accessibility, both physical and economic. Housing in Portsmouth has become increasingly out of reach, not just for young professionals, but for working families, retirees, and people who've called this city home for decades. That's why I have co-chaired the city's housing committee and have championed projects like the redevelopment of the Sherburne School site in partnership with the Portsmouth Housing Authority. That project will bring more than 120 affordable and workforce units to our community, the kind of smart, thoughtful housing we urgently need. We've also made real progress supporting our seniors. By increasing the income limits for our tax exemptions, we've made it easier for older residents to stay in their homes, aging in place with dignity and stability even on a fixed income. That's a concrete step toward a more compassionate and inclusive city. The second issue that drives my work is accessibility. While I do work downtown, I don't live downtown, and I know how critical it is to improve walkability, transit, and mobility throughout all of Portsmouth's neighborhoods. Everyone deserves a city they can move through safely and comfortably, whether you're a parent pushing a stroller, a teen biking to work, or someone with a disability navigating the sidewalk. As a small business owner downtown, I also understand how policy impacts the day-to-day realities of living and working here. My business doesn't own the building, so we pay a share of property taxes through rent, meaning I feel our tax burden not just as a homeowner, but as a tenant trying to keep a business afloat. That perspective matters. As my husband and I look forward to raising a family here, I often think about the Portsmouth we're building for the next generation. Will our children and grandchildren be able to enjoy Prescott Park, or will climate change and too slow of enacting a resilience plan see that as not possible? I think about my mother-in-law, who is quadriplegic, and how I want her to be able to enjoy the waterfront, to roll downtown with her future grandkids, and experience all that the city has to offer without barriers. That's the Portsmouth I believe in, one that works for everyone. If reelected, I'll continue to lead with empathy, curiosity, and commitment. I'd be honored to have your vote on November 4th. Thank you. Again, that is Assistant Mayor Joe Kelly, who cannot be here tonight. Now we will get to the questions. There will be three rounds of questions. In the third round, the councillors will answer a question that they were not able to get from the first two rounds. We will start over here with Councillor Aggerdrew Bagley and with Rick Beckstead. No shortage of questions. That's good. What are your thoughts? Raise social districts, Keno, games of chance?
I don't really have strong thoughts on any of those things. The city of Portsmouth has voted against Keno three or four times. What's different on the ballot this year? And since I don't have strong thoughts on it, I'll just explain the questions, because they're rather confusingly worded, I think on purpose by the people that drafted the ballot questions up in Concord. The first question's going to be about social districts. The answer is yes, you're interested in the idea of social districts, and we should continue the discussion, and the next council should come up with a plan. Or vote no, I don't like the idea of social districts. It's time to end the discussion. The second question is going to be, should the city of Portsmouth prohibit Keno? The way the law is written is if we don't vote to outlaw Keno, Keno will be legal. So if you're against Keno, this is the confusing part, you have to vote yes on question number two. The third question is games of chance. That's like baccarat and blackjack and roulette, things like that you'd see in a casino. If you vote yes, it means you're against casino games in Portsmouth.
Rick Beckstead?
Well, I'm happy to see that it's going to, once again, come down. I actually voted several times when I was on the council to be able to put this on the ballot when it came to Keno. I believe that it's the people's decision to be able to make that. What I didn't like, as far as the state in Concord seemed to be controlling more of our municipalities themselves, forcing things upon us. They didn't go and give us this choice. They actually enabled it so that it was done. Any casino right now could actually operate in Portsmouth. And that's not just there. They've gone and they forced things that municipalities do not have control of things, just like they have with housing. So I know that we're going and we're changing our zoning, we're allowing as far as mixed use, but right now, today, the state of New Hampshire, legislation in Concord, has gone inepted so that they can do it themselves. With us, with no control, no boundaries at all, those are the types of things that scare me. It's happened more and more over the last several years, and again. This is one of the reasons why I'm running for city council, and I hope to have your vote on November 4th. Thank you. Thank you.
The next question, continuing with the ballot questions. If voters, and this goes to the councillors, Rich Blaylock and Kate Cook, if voters pass social districts, what size and times do you want to see the city council implement -- I think it's, sorry, implement the voter's decision?
Honestly, I'd love to hear from the voters on that one. The social districting is a new idea for all of us, but really, it isn't. We actually do a social district on Chestnut Street for a couple hours when a music hall has an event. So the parameters can be all different. It could be from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock on one night, you know, right before the show starts on the music hall, you know, or it could be much bigger. I think the smaller, more controlled, especially to start, but I would like to hear back from the voters. First, the voters, you have to all vote to approve to let the city have social districts. But right now, we have, we permit special events, so that's how I kind of look at a social district. Could be what we already do with special events, just limiting the size and scope and length of it.
Councillor Cook?
Thank you for this question, and thank you, Councillor Blaylock, for addressing it. I have similar views on this. I think that we absolutely should listen to the voters first. If the voters approve social districts, at that stage, it'll be up to a council to, I think, appoint a committee to look at best practices as far as social districts. That means we will have an opportunity for public input and suggestions about how we should proceed. When this came before the council, I asked lots of questions about it because it's not very well-defined. It's coming from Concord without clear instructions about how we should proceed, and there are differences of opinion in Concord even about how we should proceed with social districts. So I think there's still a lot of work to be done on this, and I think that we have to do that with the residents in mind and with significant resident input. Because I'm actually concerned about the distinctions between social districts and special event permits, and not getting the two mixed up because we could end up hurting nonprofits and organizations that have special events by saying that those are social districts. So I think we have to be really, really careful about implementation.
Thank you. The next questions are for Michelle Flynn and Annie Hopkins. Why do you want to be on city council, i.e., what do you want to change, fix, or improve?
That's a very good question. I think, my impetus for wanting to be on the council is really, well, I mean, I love this community, and I feel like I bring a perspective that maybe can, you know, benefit the council. I mean, I have, there's some, we have so much going for ourselves in town, but we have these challenges, and I think my journey has been, you know, I've thought about it for a long time, and then a series of events with national election and, you know, things that were happening in the state, and I just think it's a good time to turn your attention to local politics and what's happening here. And I hope I can contribute thoughtfully to the conversation.
Annie Hopkins. So I got interested in council because I'm a doer, and what I've seen from the council in Portsmouth and from the voters in Portsmouth is that you guys are all doers too. So what I like, that enticed me, was, hey, I see moves being made in housing and affordability. Maybe we get it right, maybe we don't, but action is being taken. Something that I would look to improve would be walkability outside of the downtown core. I think, you know, areas like the West End could use more walkability and more paths inward so that we can lower the burden on downtown parking and whatnot. And I think as we discuss parking moving forward, I'd really like to see it go hand-in-hand with non-motorized transit initiatives, such as perhaps a park and bike, or a bank of bikes near the parking garage, or shuttles, you know, small-circuit shuttles that go forward. So that's what I would like to bring to the council.
Okay, thank you. And the next question is for Petra Huda and Jim Lee. What programs do you think could be changed to control budget increases?
Petra Huda, with my background and what I have been contributing for the last four years in attending most of the budget sessions, I have laid out in the last budget public hearing quite a few efficiencies that could be implemented in looking at different programs and the actual functions of different departments within the city. I think going over the budget line by line is not something that everybody does, but I do, and I think there's a lot of room for putting things together and making efficiencies out of different departments.
Well, Jim Lee, I can't disagree with anything Petra said. She's sort of the budget queen. And I think, I just finished preparing the budget for an organization I belong to, and we came in with a balanced budget, and the members voted to accept that. I think in looking at the Portsmouth budget, again, agreeing with Petra, we need to look at that budget line by line. I think there's some areas that we can combine, some department jobs, and reduce the budget that way, which reduce the property tax rate on the citizens.
Thank you. The next question is for Mayor McCook and Councillor Moreau. Since the state takes our property tax money and gives it to other towns, why aren't we working more with state representatives?
We do work a lot with the state representatives in terms of our legislative subcommittee. I think that a part of maybe a frustration, not with our state representation, but Concord is a lack of really focusing on the issues that affect municipalities. There's a lot of things that they're looking at in terms of the state level, like a lot of people go to Concord with a specific pet project, but Concord doesn't actually think of their job as supporting their municipalities. They think of it as supporting Concord, and I think that that's part of the broken aspect of state government. Our reps do a reasonable and great job at times, but the tone in Concord has to change is how do they serve the residents of the state through the municipalities, and that's certainly something that we'll continue to work with legislators here in Portsmouth on if I'm elected to another term.
I agree that we need to work with them more. State legislators need to. We've asked several times, and they've turned us down every time, to be able to add a pillow tax so that we can actually have the visitors of Portsmouth helping to pay for some of our infrastructure, so we need to continue to push for that. We also have a lot of trouble with some of our infrastructure. The New Hampshire DOT just had so many funds cut, the 10-year plan, every project, including the study on the Portsmouth traffic circle, was taken out, and that's extremely unfortunate. So we need to keep pushing our state legislators to incredibly help us to raise the gas tax and raise the tolls so that visitors coming into the city and into the state can help us all with that, because we can use some of those funds to be able to continue to do some of the infrastructure projects throughout our community and the seacoast. Thank you.
Next question is for Tom Rossi and Bob Sullivan. Do you see bicycles as an important component of our transportation policy, and if so, how do you plan to encourage their use?
I do think bicycles are an important part of the culture of Portsmouth. I myself, and you wouldn't know it, look at me, an avid road cyclist, and I enjoy using the roads around Portsmouth. For the most part, I do believe that the roads are adequate for the level of bicycle use that we have. They're pretty safe, the speed limits are low, most of the roads have good wide curb, you know, areas. I'm not really sure that we need to change much on the infrastructure to encourage the use of bicycles. I don't see Portsmouth evolving to be Amsterdam, where there are dedicated bike lanes that are absolutely choked with bikes and really difficult to cross, as a matter of fact. I do think what we have now in terms of infrastructure is adequate for what I think is going to be the continued bicycling culture within our community. Thank you.
I too like bicycles. I think that they are a very part of the, a very important part of the culture of the community. The bicycle-riding population in the city is organized and strong, and good for them. Bicycles are environmentally sound, they take up less space than cars, and they generally are good things. In terms of what can be done to try and help the bicycle population from here out, the first thought that pops into my head is a recollection of what happened when they put bollards on Middle Street. This causes my blood to stop in my veins and freeze cold. So while I think it would be a great idea, if we can think of things to do to help out bicycles, we need to be very careful in how we go about it.
Thank you. The next question is for Councillor John Tabor and Paige Trace, all the way back there. The tax burden has shifted to residential properties despite a rapid development of commercial real estate, apartments, et cetera. How would you go about bringing this situation back into balance if you believe it is a problem?
Well, it is a problem, and speaking as someone who had a 31% increase in his taxes due to the revaluation, I'm not alone. As I said, the majority of people face this. It's interesting that Novocure and Lonza, two of our biotech companies, are showing great growth in the value of their investments in Portsmouth, so much so that just the expansion of Novocure and Lonza will add so much to the tax base, it saves 11 cents on the tax rate for taxpayers. So I think the challenge is to recruit the kind of high-value companies that will rebuild our commercial base.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen, I do think there's an imbalance, and the imbalance is favoring commercial over residential at the moment. And anyone who is a homeowner in this city understands that very well this year, and unfortunately, I do think that the tax rate is likely to be higher this fall. That's the bad news, because the budget's higher. But I believe that we can find some balance with all of the build that's going on, and some units are determined to be commercial, that the equity has to be looked at and the balance has to be brought back in view as determined by a council of nine that you will choose on November 4th. And that's how I'd solve the situation, is to write the balance. Thank you.
The next question is for Peter Whalen. Would you vote to approve an increase in parking and/or garage rates during your term?
I think we probably could go up on both parking rates and garage rates, but I would be very careful because we want to protect our residents here in Portsmouth. We always have, we have a big tax burden right now. I would put together a program where residents could park for a lot less money than what they're doing right now if we're going to go up in tax the non-residents that are coming into the city. I'd keep the worker program going, but I think we've got to be very careful in the city with, when we raise parking rates, that we don't have a spillover out into the neighborhoods. It's got to be a holistic approach when you really look at it. When I was on the council before, I chaired parking traffic and safety, and parking was the number-one thing we all talked about all the time. But we probably could go up on the rates a little bit, but we need to do something for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is for Rick Beckstead and Councillor Bagley. This time, Rick Beckstead will go first. What state budget cuts have emerged that will provide the biggest challenges to City Hall and the residents of Portsmouth?
First of all, the rooms and meals has been astronomically reduced over, even just the last couple of years. When I was actually mayor, I worked with 12 other mayors around the state of New Hampshire. We actually changed legislation to be able to go and reverse as far as the volume of what we were getting. Portsmouth is the third-largest generator in the state of New Hampshire behind Nashville and Manchester. Manchester's actually first. But just that alone is something that needs to be said. The law was amended, I actually found out, three years ago, to actually be able to go and have only 30% municipalities receive distribution of that. And that's separated, that 30% only goes to all municipalities around the state of New Hampshire. And then it's based on population, and we're only 20,000. When I became mayor, it was $1.3 million, and then within two years, it ended up being over $2 million, almost 2.3. Last year, it was actually just around $2 million, and I think that that's now going to be below $2,000, $2 million again. Very concerned about that, and it's one of my number-one priorities that we need to, again, talk with Concord to be able to try and get this right.
Okay. The next one is more of a philosophical question. This will go...
Andrew.
Oh, I'm sorry, Andrew. I'm used to, like, going this way.
Andrew Bagley. Yes, I think the estimates are we send $66 million in meals revenue to Concord, we get roughly $2 million back. It's a great deal for the rest of the state. They're very unlikely to change the terms of that deal because they have more votes than cities like Portsmouth and Manchester and Nashville do at the state level. What fear, I have more fear about is not the cuts in Concord, but the federal cuts. We're seeing that already with the affordable housing subsidies. Will projects be able to get off the ground? Because all of those fundings that we depend on at the federal level are uncertain. A lot of our police and education positions are grant-funded, have been for decades. Those are at great risk of being cut. So not only are we looking at the challenge of the tax burden shifting heavily towards the residents in New Hampshire, we're also looking at the challenge of cuts at the federal and state level. And at the city level, we're going to have to decide as a community, do we pay to continue those positions and increase our tax base, or do we make cuts? Because there's nobody we can shift this burden to. The Fed shifted to the states, the states shifted to the city, and now it's going to be on us, the residents, to make these tough decisions on what we want to keep and what we're going to eliminate.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Next question also is going to Councillor Cook and Blaylock, and if I forget you, Rich, please let me know, okay? This is a more philosophical question. If you knew of a councillor running, or if you knew of a candidate running involved in fraud, would you report them, encourage them to drop out?
No. Thank you so much for this question.
Are you sure?
Yes, I actually am very appreciative of this question. As many of you know, when I joined the council two years ago, one of the first things I did was request that we establish a governance committee, and I chaired that governance committee. And the first thing that we did on the governance committee was reform the ethics policies that we have in the city. And so we put in place new ethics policies, and then we reformed not just those policies, but frankly, the way we do elections, as far as disclosures in elections, because it was critical to me that we get ethics right. So I absolutely would be speaking to that individual and saying, hey, you're violating the rules. Either you can go let the city clerk know that you're violating the rules, or I would be happy to let the city clerk know that you're violating the rules.
Thank you. Councillor Blaylock?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. I mean, obviously, I try to focus on my own campaign, but if I did find out that another candidate, you know, I never wanted to talk bad about another candidate, but it is Portsmouth. It's the town I grew up in. It's, I care a lot about Portsmouth. I don't, my father has taught me not to stay silent. If you see something wrong, stand up and say something. I usually do. My father did, my grandfather did. We are not afraid of confrontation if something is going wrong. I am, it's uncomfortable, but I'm not afraid of it. I coached football at the high school, you know, we deal with a lot. We've got over 100 kids on the team. You know, we teach them to be honest, communicate, work hard, but if I ever saw anything, I would say something. If I ever saw anything appear, and they were running to represent you, I would say something.
Thank you. The next question is for Annie Hopkins and Michelle Flynn, and first we'll take Annie Hopkins. There's a lot of questions on the budget, so they will be combined. Since Portsmouth taxpayers have suffered from painfully high property tax increases due to property revaluation and the current city's council's subsequent budget increase, would each candidate, I guess the two of you, name one item they would be willing to eliminate for potential expenditures in the next two years?
Well, that's a tough question, because Portsmouth does provide such great services. And I wouldn't take that lightly either, because a lot... And I wouldn't take that lightly either, because a lot of Portsmouth's budget is directed towards employing folks that help our city run and educate our kids and, you know, protect our properties and whatnot. So no, off the top of my head, I cannot think of one right now that I would cut, but I would take a look, and I would consider the pros and the cons carefully. Because yes, it's a budget line, but also it's, you know, someone's position or someone's services that they rely on. You know, I was at the State House whenever they were talking, at the budgetary hearing for Medicaid cuts, and the amount of people that testified. So while budgets matter, people's lives matter too. So it's not something that I can just off the top of my head say, yeah, this has got to go.
Yeah, that is a very hard question. I don't, I don't have anything off the top of my head either. I mean, I, I think that it's worth looking at the maybe non-operating aspect of the budget a little more deeply. And I know that, you know, there's, I know that the, the school board budget is so critical and, but I, I think that it would be worth looking a little more closely at that. You know, we really value our schools here. It's a huge draw for people to come to Portsmouth. But I think it's worth, these are, these are things that are worth looking at. But I do not have anything specific. I have a very general kind of outlook on what's included in the budget, particularly the non-operating aspect of the budget.
Thank you. I couldn't give all the hard questions to the incumbents. The next question is for Jim Lee and Petra Huda. How would you cut the budget by 24.5 million that was added in the last four years? First Jim, and then Petra. I don't write them, folks.
Well, again, that's a tough question. I've looked at the budget, and I think there can be some economies realized by combining some of the departments that do the same job. And I think that, that would be probably the simplest way to, to reduce some of the expenditures in the budget.
Petra Huda. So that was, that's a big number. But in May, when I was looking for efficiencies, I totally agree with what Jim said. We do have various departments that overlap. One that comes to mind is in the public works area. Now, I don't think, I don't believe we need to eliminate any services based on this, but I would ask, do we need engineering in public works, water, sewer, storm water, and then even a little bit in trees and greenery? Or can we combine that? Do we need to have mechanic services and actually repairs in public works, water, sewer, and storm water? Oh, and I forgot, parking. So there's a lot of efficiencies that can be gained without looking at or cutting positions if we look at efficiencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Next two questions are for Councilor Rowe and Mayor McEckern. How can we get and keep our town resident, or keep our town resident-friendly like it used to be?
Well, with not knowing exactly where that was pointed towards, I've talked a lot about in the past, making it resident-friendly in ways for cost, especially parking downtown. I'm a big proponent of raising our parking rates for visitors and lowering our parking rates for actual residents, so that's one thing. I guess resident-friendly policies, you know, there wasn't a whole lot of detail in that question, was there? I think the, the work we've been doing around housing is actually done a lot for residents. We've been able to keep some residents who work in the area to be able to, through the Ruth Lewin Griffin place, and I think that we'll have a lot more through the cohousing that's coming up and through the Sherburne project. So I think we can continue to be resident-friendly by just continuing to make the city more affordable.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question. I'd agree in terms of affordability. I'll take a little different tack, though. I think in terms of resident-friendly, meaning kind of prioritizing residents, one of the things that I think a lot of folks have a problem with, they'll see a development coming into Portsmouth, and they'll see exceptions made for that development, and then they'll go to try to put an eight-foot fence in their backyard, and they'll have to go through an enormous amount of hoops. I think one way that we can make it more resident-friendly is reducing the amount of regulations that we have. We're certainly having a different way that we're viewing them for, for residents. I was proud that we were able to allow you to put a shed in your backyard, that we got rid of the requirement for, to go before the ZBA, you know, to get a, sorry, Beth, for a, for an exception for a fence. But ultimately, you know, a government should fear its residents, residents should never fear its government. So we have to make sure that we are making the rules for, for everyone, and that people feel as though they have the ability to actually get things done. And I think that's what folks are saying for residents. If it's resident-friendliness, then volunteer. Get out there and, and be on a kid's sports team, or, or go volunteer at the senior center, and you'll see a lot of, a lot of friendly people.
Okay. The next question is for Tom Rossi and Bob Sullivan, first Bob Sullivan. Why do we keep building condos?
To my knowledge, the city has never built a condo.
Perhaps you could expand on that?
You know...
You have a minute.
Condominium is a form of ownership of real estate. It doesn't differ from, in appearance, from an apartment, which we've had all along. The fact that what might have been apartments in a prior era are condominiums now is a product of market conditions. For example, someone who might have been able to buy a house before, housing prices are now so high that maybe they have to buy a condo. And if they want to own real estate, it needs to be a condo, so you have condominiums. Apartments, condominiums offer a number of advantages over an apartment if you can get to a condominium, primarily real estate taxes, financing, and most importantly, increase in the value of your property over time, which you don't get if you rent an apartment. And I suppose those are the reasons why those market conditions have produced a situation where a number of people want condominiums, and therefore condominiums get built.
Okay, thank you. Tom Rossi?
I'm trying to think about what is the question behind the question, because I think that the angst that people feel is not just that condominiums are being built, but the price point that they enter the market at. I hear a lot about all the multimillion-dollar condominiums that are being built downtown, and it just shocks people. So, yeah, yes, market forces are at work, condominiums are built because people will buy them, and condominiums are built in preference to single-family residences because the land itself is so valuable that it has to have more dense development on it in order to make good use of the land that we have, which is not expanding. We only have a certain amount of land where people can live. So that is what drives the creation of condominiums. I think the angst is about the price point of the condominiums, but those are free-market conditions and results. And that is really not something that I believe falls into the purview of the city council to try to address. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is for Paige Trace and Councilor Tabor. Parking, parking, parking. One of the city garages is at capacity, and there's talk of needing a third garage in the near future. Under the zoning ordinance, developers can be relieved from having to provide parking, yet city taxpayers may be called upon to build a third garage. Do you think that's accurate or fair?
Yes, obviously. We have pressure today on our parking. I think that there have been plenty of good solutions that have been offered this evening. I would firmly suggest that if we need another parking garage, which it does look like we're sort of headed that way, that maybe perhaps we put it out in the areas where we will potentially see more congestion, more build, and put it out on the perimeter to allow either residents or workers have a reduced rate as opposed to visitors, and we increase the rate in town for visitors, lower for residents, and do the same for an ancillary parking lot or garage. And one or the other, we, I obviously would opt for the parking lot first, but if garage is necessary, so be it. We would have to face that. Thank you.
Councilor Tabor.
There's a very good parking study that the city's done that proves with comprehensive data that we'll be 300 spaces short downtown in about five to seven years. So we'll need a third garage. But, you know, Eileen Foley, our former mayor, told me once, I took on my whole council to build the High Henover Street Garage. Because in those days, it was a, people didn't understand downtown parking is a utility to enable people to get out of their car and walk around. When that garage was built, it created the whole, it supported the whole revival of downtown. And so we will need another garage. And it's important for people to understand that garages are paid for out of parking revenue. They don't necessarily involve the tax rate. So our parking revenue will grow, and it's an important utility to keep the vitality of downtown, and we should be planning ahead.
Thank you. And Mr. Whalen is again all by himself. Why don't we have a better public transportation system or plan?
That's a good question. I mean, the city, we have Coast, the city does contribute to Coast, but it's woefully underfunded. And I think part of the need, either state or local, is Coast, or an entity like Coast needs to have the funding to do more routes around the city. As we continue to grow and this discussion about a third parking garage, I mean, some sort of micro-transit system throughout the city funded through parking revenue, I think would be a good solution moving forward. But it all also comes down to affordability. I mean, if you look at major metropolitan areas, they all have great transit systems to get, get to, and we just don't have that here in New Hampshire anywhere. So I think we could do much better on that, but I think it's a regional issue that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the first two rounds. Now we start our speed round. We are going to ask the faster round. You guys are awfully fast. Thank you. So I'm going to ask all the candidates to answer a question that was asked in the first two rounds that they did not, see, they know it already, that they did not get to ask but would like to, and I can reread the question for them. We'll start with Councilor Bagley.
Thank you, Beth. And how much time do we have?
You have a minute.
Okay, so the speed round threw me off.
Yes, sorry.
So I'm going to take one of the softball ones. Why do you want to be a councillor? And some of those questions were great questions, I appreciate them. But that one I really like. I've only been a councillor twice, and our council was unique in Portsmouth history to be the exact same council elected twice. That won't happen this time, there's two people not running. So no matter what happens on election day, it's going to be a new, different council, which I'd very much like to be a part of. There's a lot of research and analysis and looking at the budget and all the, the geeky municipal work that we have to do. And I love that. What I really love about being on the council is, I probably talk too much, impose too much, but I'm a very approachable person. And when somebody has an issue, I got a text tonight, somebody's having trouble with click-and-fix. I'm going to look into it and get back to them. But there's somebody here in the audience tonight. Her neighborhood had a problem. There was a fence put up, and it was on Hillside Drive, and the whole neighborhood was essentially cut off from downtown. We worked very hard over the course of two years to get a sidewalk put in. You guys have probably all seen it, it's on Lafayette, right across from the high school. That sidewalk was critical infrastructure for a lot of families and a lot of kids. And it's very difficult to get something built by a municipality. So two years is lightning quick, and that couldn't happen without somebody on the council that championed their cause. But it really couldn't have happened without a neighborhood that organized in a phenomenal way, and made that cause easy for me to champion. So I want to be a council, councilperson again because of those opportunities, but also because Portsmouth is such a great place to be a councillor because of the citizens.
Thank you. Rick Beckstead?
Tom, I'm going to combine two of the questions that had to do with the controlled-budget spending and the cuts of the budget. Best ideas come to mind, the very first thing that comes to mind is over the last four years, we've created more than 30 positions since COVID, and those positions were after COVID, not before COVID. COVID, we ran efficiently, no one lost their jobs. It was an efficient way of doing it, and I think we need to do a full efficiency evaluation with each one of the departments. Two, we need to take serious consideration when it comes to health trust, with the way we go and insure. Municipalities all over the state of New Hampshire are actually abandoning health trust, and they're self-insuring themselves. I know that the city of Rochester actually did it, and actually, it's maintained a value that the, the employees of the city actually pay less, and they're getting better coverage by self-funding themselves. The way it works in the state of New Hampshire is, you have to do your, your health trust, you need to be able to fund at a certain level, so municipalities are required to keep a 110% level at all times to be able to pay out. And as municipalities leave, the municipalities that are leaving, you have to make up the difference. So Portsmouth has been making up that difference. And three, overtime on the fire department. Four years ago, when I was on the city council, two things were told to us that would lower the overtime budget of $700,000. It is now over $2 million. We need to cut back on the overtime expenditures, and I have ideas for that if I am elected on the council. Thank you.
Councilor Blaylock?
Thank you, Beth. I'm going to take the question, why condos? I actually do think the city has, plays a part. I, I've spent the last four years serving on the Historic District Commission, and early on, I, we were reviewing a project downtown, they've broken ground now, the Sheraton parking lot. I looked over at John Wykoff, fellow commissioner chair at the time, I was like, John, are we, we are designing their project? And he goes, yep, we're designing their project. They have to go get approval from the HTC, it takes six to nine months. So that cost and that time, when that's imposed on a developer, they pass that on to us. They have to build luxury condos if we impose a six-to-nine-month unknown part of their process. If we take new construction off the historic district's purview, because it is not historic construction, then they could focus on the historic buildings and protect the historic buildings we have, we would not be imposing that cost on these developers. The developers want to build apartments. They get taxed lower, they make more money. If they have to build condos and sell them once, they get taxed at a much higher rate. But we impose that nine-month, that six-month unknown, they have to go buy zero-degree fridges, quartz countertops, walk-in closets. They have to build luxury condos because they have to account for that cost that we're imposing on them.
Councilor Cook?
Thank you for this opportunity. So I'm going to take kind of three of the questions, because they're all related. And there are questions that no one likes to address. Parking, parking garage, bike, bicycling, and how do we, how do we address Coast and the challenges Coast is having? Coast has had significant cuts in federal funding and in state funding, and Portsmouth has tried to pick up the slack by increasing the amount of funding we provide to Coast. We provide that through parking revenue. But ultimately, we're going to have to look at new ways to fund public transit. And public transit impacts not just the way we operate in town, in downtown, but throughout the city and the region. It also impacts whether or not we need a new garage. It impacts full implementation of other multimodal transit options. So we need to be thinking about full implementation of our bike ped pedestrian plan, our pedestrian plan. Plus, we need to be thinking about a transit loop. We need to be considering other options, satellite parking lots, anything that we can do to provide better transit options for residents, because that's an affordability issue, especially for residents who are struggling with their home, home costs.
Thank you. Technically a violation of the ground rules, but we'll let that go. Combine the three questions. Michelle Flynn?
Yeah, I was going to do the same thing. I was going to sort of merge the question, the last two questions around parking, do we need a third garage, and then why don't we have better public transportation system? And my thinking has sort of changed as I've been moving through, learning so much about what's happening. I mean, I think we definitely have some, potentially some additional parking needs, but if we had a public transportation, transit system, and also we executed bike path plan in a, in a, I'm going to say better way, it would mitigate, mitigate some of the needs around parking. I mean, we have to lean into that. I've talked to a number of people as I've been walking our neighborhoods canvassing who really want to lean into all those things. They, you know, in the, in the question around parking fees, like, all of those things are interrelated. And I think if we, you know, I know some of... And I think if we, you know, I know some of these things are potentially going to be addressed in the master plan. But if we look at it more holistically, all these components together, we might be able to tick some boxes and, again, mitigate some of these challenges.
Thank you. Annie Hopkins.
Do you want to pick one for me? Otherwise, I'm going to keep talking about bikes.
Which question did you want?
Oh, any of them. Go ahead. Pick a medium-level one.
Okay.
I don't remember all of them, honestly. There's a lot of questions.
Do you see bicycles as an important component of our transportation policy? And if so, how do you plan to encourage its use?
Love it.
That did go to Tom Rossi and Bob Sullivan first.
I do. I support bicycle culture. And I think it, what it can do is it can help us expand the walkability again outside of that downtown core. And not only just, you know, encourage... Ways to encourage bicycling culture are to make things more enjoyable. Routes, better wayfinding, better directions, you know, making like road signs, so to speak, for bicycles. So that people really think like, yeah, this is a commuter route. Also incentivizing somehow, or make, you know, people, folks love little games. So I would ride my bike if I got a ice cream at the end or something like that. So really kind of incentivizing. I mean, that's the only reason I ride my bike into town, honestly. It's for ice cream. So things like that, to really bring, you know, build community around bicycling and non-motorized transport. And then the city could also, in the, around the garages, put those bike banks, you know, Boston has them, big cities have them, so that folks can access downtown more easily and not overburden a parking downtown.
Peter Huda.
Okay, I would like to address the need for a third parking garage. So if, big if in my mind, sorry, if we need a new parking garage, and it's a big if in my mind, I would only support a garage that would go underground to protect our historic district. We have built, and yes, we're close to the water, but other cities like Boston, if you've traveled down there a lot, you know they go down almost nine stories. Why can't we do that? The current zoning downtown doesn't require developers to provide parking. For example, the latest co-living project intends to rely entirely on a Hanover garage for public parking. Developers should not rely on public garages at the taxpayers' expense to cover their parking. Why should the taxpayers pay for a new garage so developers can maximize profits? And that's exactly what is happening here. Portsmouth can protect the parking, preserve its history, and build smart, also ensuring that developers who benefit contribute to the residents and the visitors alike.
Jim Lee.
I'll take affordable housing again. Let me preface that by saying I'm a former president of the New Hampshire Association of Realtors and also a former president of Seacoast Board of Realtors, which is our local realtor organization. Each one of those organizations have invested a portion of their investment funds with the New Hampshire Housing Partnership at a much lower rate than we can get on the open market to help fund affordable housing for lower and middle-income people. So one shining example we have right here in Portsmouth, what we could do more of to promote affordable housing is the Housing Cooperative on Woodbury Avenue, where an aging mobile home park got some funds from the New Hampshire Housing Partnership. They actually bought the house, the park, rehabbed it. And now the residents own that in a cooperative form of ownership. So they're able to control the cost of that and keep their rentals cost down.
There actually was no question on affordable housing, so it's strange. Very far from it.
There you go.
I'm going to interpret the question about condos. But I'm going to ask the mayor to be disciplined on this. Answer a question that was asked.
I'm going to answer the two, the 24 and 1/2 million and who would you cut? So I think it's great whoever asked the 24 and 1/2 million because it puts in ideological terms, or takes it out of ideological terms, puts it in concrete terms what we're talking about. The budget isn't some sort of ideological pursuit or fight. It's nuts and bolts. It's getting down to brass tacks, figuring it out. When we're talking about who we're going to cut, the people that we would cut out of the budget are those that are retiring. And we're not going to replace those positions if possible. That's how we have to lower the spend. We invest it in IT so that we can have better systems so that we don't have to replace everybody. It's also, we've talked about consolidation of departments, actually get that implemented. And it wasn't, it was kicking and streaming across coming to the departments, feeling like they were going to take power. We, if we believe in government, we owe it to ourselves to make it as efficient as possible so that people also believe in it, too.
Thank you. Councilor Moreau.
I don't like to break the rules, so... And other people have talked about the ones I was going to talk about. So I'm going to take the hard one, the ethical and the fraud question. As a licensed attorney, you know, we spend a lot of time talking about ethics. You have to go to classes every single year as part of our continuing legal education. And we talk about ethics. Fraud is very prevalent in my industry. I'm a real estate attorney who owns a title company. And I can tell you there's fraud with people trying to sell other people's properties. There's fraud with people with wiring and information. And we are bombarded by it all the time. And reporting it is the only answer. We have to stick together, especially when we're talking about people who are representing the city. We need to make sure that everyone is above board and actually does the ethical thing. And I would hope that any candidate up here, if they found out something that was wrong, that they would report it because I think it's the only correct answer.
Thank you. Tom Rossi.
I do not take notes on every individual question. I know, but I can't read your writing.
Sorry.
I'm trying to cheat, but I just can't do it.
What about ethics?
There were a number of questions about tax increases, correct? Or was there one?
About the budget in general.
About the budget in general, which I'm going to interpret as being important in the context of tax increases, which is important in the context of affordability of living in Portsmouth. So by that circuitous route, I would like to say that affordability, yes, part of it is based on austerity in the city and the effect of that on taxes. But part of it is also based on prosperity within the city and our opportunity to have a shiny future that is not totally dependent or mostly dependent on the tourism industry, which pretty much provides a lot of service jobs that are not super-high income. We've got an opportunity to build on the sputtering start of the biotech industry that's coming here. I have a great background in biotech. I would love to be part of working with the New Hampshire Life Sciences Organization and encouraging more companies like Novocure, like Lonza, to set up shop here and increase the employment base and the opportunity to earn the kind of wages that make Portsmouth affordable. Thank you.
Bob Sullivan.
My moment, I would like to spend on the resident-friendly question. First off, I totally agree with what I understand to be the premise of this question, which is that the feel of the community has changed a bit over the years. Back in the days when more local people worked in a navy yard and everybody's parents had gone to school with everybody else's parents, there was a kind of a small-town feel in the city that was extremely resident-friendly, and it was nice. And that has changed somewhat. However, all is not lost. Just last week, a relatively new resident of the city, maybe three years, who moved here from New Jersey and bought a nice home on Newcastle Avenue. Guy's name is Mike. Wouldn't want to give his last name without his permission. But Mike, Mike was telling me, "The thing I most have enjoyed about being in Portsmouth," he said, "is how nice people have been to me, especially," he said, "people in City Hall." He said, "I've been to the police department. I've been to the tax collector's office. I've been to numerous City Hall offices," he said. "Everybody has been nice to me. They have all talked to me," he says. "In every single one of these instances in New Jersey, they would have just thrown me out of the building." So my feeling is that maybe you're not quite as resident-friendly as we used to be, but it's not that bad.
Councilor Taber.
I'm going to try for a twofer. We had the question about the three ballot questions. And I wanted to surface the question about games of chance. The voters have a chance to exercise local control and vote to never have games of chance. And that means never have casino gambling in Portsmouth. And I think that's the right thing. I'm opposed to casino gambling here, and I think most of us are. Second, transportation. Well, why don't we have progress on transportation? Have we ever asked the potential beneficiaries? If you look at, for example, Savannah or Hanover, New Hampshire, these are towns where the private sector, hotels, colleges, restaurants, led the initiative for a shuttle loop. And you think about it, the hotels could, with a shuttle loop, have passengers, have tourists come to C&amp;J and be picked up, brought into town, and never need a car. So I think it's a question of who benefits. And let's ask them and see if we can put together some use cases.
Paige Trace.
Hi there. I'd like to take the condo question, please.
For $200, it's yours.
And I'd like to take that for a very odd, unique reason. Everyone here knows that I'm sort of a nut about the history of Portsmouth and historic preservation. And so I'd like to respectfully suggest that while Councilor Blaylock may be correct that six-to-nine months of lag time on the discussion of the design of a building is probably a little bit too long. Fact of the matter is that the HDC, the Historic District Commission, serves a very, very valuable position in this city and provides a very serious service to us. That district commission will hopefully prevent the buildings in downtown Portsmouth that are within the historic district from looking like one cookie cutter after another and Portsmouth becoming the same-old, same-old town. So I respectfully, I do agree with Mr. Blaylock. And I would like to think that if I am on council and he is on council, that we could respectfully have a wonderful conversation about how to achieve both. Maintain the historic character of Portsmouth and create a more efficient Historic District Commission. Sympathetic, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Whalen.
Yeah, I'm going to talk about the budget. And a couple, couple things. Number one, I've been advocating, if I get on council, and be happy to be, if I'm happy you guys elect me, the first thing I would do is I'd put a hiring freeze on. And that would not include police and fire, but it would be all other city departments. And that's really to get a handle on retirements, what's going on in the city, and to make sure that we're funding these positions the way we should be. Second thing I do is we've had the same union negotiator for over 20 years, negotiating all the union contracts. I think we've got to relook at that and maybe make some changes there. And then the next thing is, is on revenue growth. You know, we've had all this new building in Portsmouth. That's a lot of growth in the taxes coming into the city. But you, as residents, are paying more every year. So we've got to get right side the ship here. So if I'm elected to the council, I'm going to focus on those things to make sure we do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, each candidate will read their, or talk their closing statement. They have one minute. And one minute's about all we have for each candidate. And I think I'll start with the alphabetical order again. Councilor Bagley.
Thanks, everyone. Once again, Andrew Bagley. I'm going to throw out my closing statement. I see some of you have notebooks. If you have your phone, get them out, get it ready. But I can tell you something real quick first. The first Wednesday every month at 5:30 in the reading room at the Athenaeum, we have something I created a couple of years ago called the Franklin Club. It's a discussion group. You don't ask the RSPP. You just drop in. And we have discussions that are mostly positive in nature. The reason I say that is the quality of the people in Portsmouth is great. I want to meet all of you. And that's what I love about this city. I never get tired of talking about this city. And so this is why you have to have your notebook or your phone ready. My phone number is 603-583-8015. It'll be on YouTube. You can pause it and get it that way. Shoot me a text. Let's have a coffee. Secondly, I don't know how much time I have left. 30 seconds, perfect. I'm going to not make a plug for myself. I'd love to represent you guys again. I love the city. I'll put the work in. The plug I'm going to make is I actually put $5 in Bob Sullivan's pocket the day before signups ended. That man is, I got to know him my first term on the council. His knowledge is inexhaustible. He is the Google slash Wikipedia of the city of Portsmouth and municipal law. He will be a huge asset to whomever's elected if he's up there on the dais with them. So I really, really strongly encourage you to consider voting for Bob.
Rick Beckstead.
Final statements, Rick Beckstead. There is nothing more that I love than the city itself. My family knows that, my children that we raised here, my wife and I, over 40 years, have a business for 39 years, working construction, remodel, walking and knocking on doors and going to meet and greets for the last four weeks. People have asked for a change. So I'm going to remind you all how you do about that change. You have seven incumbents that are running for reelection. Do you know that it takes six people, two-thirds majority, to be able to spend your money when it comes to your budget? Or not spend your money? If you want policy and change when it comes to rules and regulations, you need five councillors. For the last four years, we've had a council that has all moved forward in one direction with no real change in any shape or form. The voters, this time around, this is your one chance. Every two years, you get a chance. Six years ago, we were in exactly the same situation we are right now. Six years ago, the residents and the voters of Portsmouth made a change. I'm hoping that the residents are going to speak and stand up and have everyone at every door. 5,000 people voting in our city is not enough, and we are 20,000. Tell your neighbors, tell your friends to come and vote. I ask for your vote on November 4th. My name is Rick Beckstead. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Once again, my name is Rich Blaylock. Portsmouth, you created me. You know, my father was a son of a city councillor. I almost am a son of a city councillor. I'm a son of a mayor and assistant mayor. I grew up here. I went to Portsmouth schools. I graduated top of my class. I played sports here. I went to the rec department. You know, my family business just turned 50 years old. I thank you, Portsmouth. You've made who I am. I'm just here to give back. I'm here to listen to you, to serve you. Two ears, one mouth, and to keep Portsmouth as great as it is. Yeah, we have issues. We want to keep it affordable. You know, we want to keep it healthy. We want to protect us. We want to keep our schools great. But I'm willing to do the hard work. I'm willing to listen to you. I answer all my emails. I answer all my emails. Please vote for me November 4th. Thank you very much.
Councilor Cook?
Thank you all again for coming tonight and listening to us. I know you've taken a lot of time out of your schedule. I do really appreciate that. I wasn't fortunate enough to be born in Portsmouth. In fact, I'm a person who had moved around a lot as a kid and as an adult, following my husband for his career or him following me around. But we moved to the Seacoast 17 years ago, and we made this our home. That's the longest I've lived anywhere in my life, and I've chosen this place because this is the best place in the country to live. And I know a lot of people share that view, but it's become challenging because it's not very affordable. And so, we need to desperately work on affordable housing issues for residents. We also need to work on general affordability, because as things have gotten more expensive, it's gotten harder and harder for people to stay here. So, I want everyone that's here in this room, I want my neighbors to be able to stay in Portsmouth, because I love this community, and the community is made up of its people. I ask you to turn out and vote on November 4th, and please vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This was great, and thanks, everybody, for coming out. I, for 16 years, worked at Heinemann Publishing. We published professional books for teachers right here in Portsmouth, and my work there was rooted in collaboration. I worked with multiple stakeholders and, you know, I learned to listen carefully, synthesize information, and solve problems, and it's the same approach I would bring to the council, grounded, responsive, and focused on serving the public. You know, I think that fresh voices matter. You know, I'm deep, I have a deep-rooted connection to Portsmouth, and I'm ready to do the work, to listen deeply and learn deeply and listen openly and make informed decisions. I'm glad I can volunteer, I have the opportunity to volunteer for the community in this way, and I think that's really exciting. My name's Michelle Flynn, and I hope I can get your vote on November 4th for Portsmouth City Council. Thanks, folks. Everybody for coming out.
Hello again. I'm Annie Hopkins, and, you know, I was meeting with someone this morning who reached out to get to know this new person who raised her hand to, you know, run for city council. And he said, "Why should I vote for you?" And he didn't challenge me like at the forum the other day in five words or less, and I still don't know how I could do that. But I will say this, as, in the many hats that I've worn throughout my life, volunteer firefighter, mom, and physical therapist, what that has taught me through my lived experience and traveling and such, is that I have the analytical brain, problem-solving, a physical therapy, you know, we take problems and we create solutions, that's paired with people-centered, you know, focus. It's empathy and analysis, and I think that that's something, that balanced viewpoint would do well on city councils, so that we make sure that all voices are heard here as we make the decisions on how to move our city forward. Thank you.
Petra Huda? Portsmouth deserves leadership that protects what makes the city special and the people who call it home. I'm running because fiscal responsibility isn't just about numbers. It's about protecting the affordability of every resident. And preservation isn't just about resisting change. It's about guiding growth that strengthens, not erases, our sense of place. I've done this work before. During my first term, I delivered the lowest budget increases in a decade and demanded accounting billing from the city spending. I'll bring the same experience, independence, and common sense back to the council. I'm Petra Huda, and I'm asking for your vote to keep Portsmouth affordable, livable, and uniquely ours, the city that honors its history while protecting its future. Thank you.
My name is Jim Lee. I've served our country in the United States Air Force. After that enlistment, I worked with my family in Knoxville, Tennessee, and operated two successful restaurants, so I know what it takes to operate a business. In the next four, the last four decades of my life, I've been a real estate broker, advocating for clients and bringing people to consensus on opposing issues. So, I think I offer those skills and experience to the city of Portsmouth as your next city counselor. I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth, and, oh, no, I always forget that, and the, the citizens of voter education. I've asked for your vote. My name is Douglas McCarron. I'd ask one more thing. When you walked in here this evening, you passed by the foyer where there was the master plan, whiteboards listed out. We've talked about so many things tonight, and I can, I would urge you, like, what we do up there is important, the budget, the changes that we'll make. What you do out there is even more important. We decide what type of community we want to see every 10 years, for the next 10 years. We are living in the last master plan right now. I would love to see every person that's came here tonight spend the time to, to look out there in that hallway, ask how you can get involved in the master plan. If you feel as though the world is falling apart, even better, it's a time to get in, dig up, you know, roll up your sleeves and, and dig in and do some good. You will feel better getting involved in your community. If you're new to the community, this is a great chance to meet a lot of people. So, I urge everyone to vote, but also to stay involved.
Councilor Moreau? Thank you, Beth, and the citizens for voter education. And thank you to all of you for coming and asking your great questions. I'm asking for your vote because I want to continue the work, and one of the things I was going to talk about, the mayor's already done. I want to talk about the master plan. We are embarking on that long process. It's approximately a year and a half. We're still in the gathering of information phase. I've had a lot to do with the last master plan as appointing board member, and I sit on the master plan advisory committee now. I also have the experience, because I chair the Rocking and Planning Commission, working regionally with a lot of our partners. So, I'd like all of you to call and, and be part of the conversation for the master plan, because we need everyone's input in order to make sure that it's the plan of this community of how we want us to move forward. So, I echo his, his request that everyone go out, participate. When you hear that there's something going on and you can't make it, reach out to us, and we'll find a way to get your input there, whether you can make it or not. Thank you.
Well, my name is Tom Rossi. I'm asking for your vote, and I will tell you why. I'll start with a question. How long does it take in New England to put down roots and be part of a community? Some people say it takes generations. When Kathy and I moved here, subsequent to that, our adult children moved up to this region. They've made grandchildren for us. My mother moved up from Florida to be closer to us. She's 92, don't tell her I told you, and is now living in Edgewood. So, we are the Miracle Grow family. We've put down our roots really fast. We intend to stay here. We intend to be part of building this community for the future. I believe that I have the executive experience and the rational thinking that can help solve the problems of today. I've got the temperament to work with whoever else of the eight people who get elected onto the council effectively to pursue common goals, and I have the vision to look past today's problems and think about a bright future for Portsmouth, which is beyond anything that we've experienced so far and is just going to be prosperous and high quality of life for all of us and for our children. Thank you.
Thanks. Bob Sullivan, again. First off, I'm going to repay the $5 to Andrew Bagley. Secondly, like everyone at all of these tables, I love this wonderful city, and I want to do the right thing by it in everything that I do as a citizen and perhaps as a city Beyond that, however, and perhaps more than anybody else at any of these tables, I am a huge believer in and supporter of the existing city government that we have. I think that our city manager and our city council and its predecessor, city managers and city councils, have delivered to you today what is really the gem of northern New England. It is the city that everybody wants to be in, and there are good, obvious reasons for this, and you know what they are. My goal on the city council would just be to continue that trend.
Thanks, everybody, for your questions tonight. I'm John Tabor. In 1987, I came to Portsmouth with a dream to start a newspaper and raise a family here, and that, of course, included the journalist vow of poverty. That fall, Betsy and I sent out a double birth announcement, pictures of the Portsmouth press, all 4.9 ounces of it, and our daughter Laura, seven pounds and two ounces. The newspaper had a short and happy life, but my daughter grew up, thrived, and, like me, has gone into public service. I remember now the startup newspaper's motto, "Here to Serve Portsmouth." What my business partner and I wrote under that masthead at the naive age of 32 is still what propels me today. It's a desire to serve this city and do my best to keep it great, keep it a leader among small cities in housing, energy, and safety, and education, and even in public discourse. I'm eager to keep working. I ask for your vote to continue what that 32-year-old wrote so long ago, "To Serve Portsmouth."
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for coming this evening. We are popular, there's no doubt. We're historic, there's no doubt. We're open, we're kind, we're creative, we're caring, there's no doubt. Now, we need to work to provide affordability in every sense of the word. We need to work off the premise that every ward is different with unique needs. All wards are equally important to me. That understanding and respect for the needs of all helps, for the needs of all, helps to provide some balance. You, the residents, are Portsmouth. This city council needs to protect that. Involvement and transparency, ladies and gentlemen, please show up and give your opinion at board meetings. Our city government needs that. The city of Portsmouth needs to hear you. I am Paige Trace, candidate for city council. I stand behind my words. I stand behind you, Portsmouth. Please vote for me on November 4th. Thank you.
My name is Peter Whalen. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. Portsmouth is a crossroads. The prevalence of unanimous votes in numerous non-public meetings alongside a budget that keeps growing beyond the means of many residents signals need for a change. We cannot afford to continue down the same financial path that has been followed over the past four years. As residents, we must take action to ensure a sustainable future for our community, and I say it's our community. The way forward is to elect a council with new people who will act and do the nuts and bolts of good budgeting and governance to get us back on track. I love this city. I've been here for 35 years. I've been watching it grow and change over the years, and we need to take some action here to get us back on track. And if you believe that, I'm going to ask you to go out and vote November 4th for Peter Whalen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This concludes tonight's forum. I do want to say, I have had the privilege of standing at this forum for quite a few sessions, cycles now, and looking out on the public, you have been wrapped, attentive, writing notes, you submitted wonderful questions, and thank you very much. Thank you, candidates, for all of your thoughtful answers in one minute or less. And so, I think that everybody should give everybody a round of applause. Please join us a week from tonight, when we will hear from the candidates for police commission, fire commission, and school board. Special thanks to city staff for all of their assistance, especially in light of the problems that they've had at City Hall over the last two days. Thank you, and please remember to vote on November 4th. Good night.